Great. Well, welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 6, 2023 Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members Mariel Guleboff, John Fallon, and Michael Betancourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We will begin tonight with the acceptance of donations.
I move we accept with gratitude donations to the Council on Aging gift account, $180 for transportation purposes, $384.40 for Meetup Monday socialization, and $4,100 proceeds from the symposium.
All those in favor?
I move we accept with gratitude an earmark of $50,000 from the Department of Fire Services to the Fire Department for a new life pack monitor, defibrillator, and Lucas CPR device.
All those in favor?
I move we accept with gratitude an earmark of $150,000 from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development towards implementation of the town's local rapid recovery plan.
Roll call, not roll call. All those in favor?
I move we accept with gratitude a grant of $50,000 from Mastat Shared Streets and Spaces Program to the town for the purchase of snow removal equipment.
All those in favor?
I move we accept with gratitude a grant of $87,480.25 from Mastat Shared Streets and Spaces Program to the town towards the reconstruction of the intersection of Woodside Road and Wildwood Street.
All those in favor?
I move we accept with gratitude a grant of $243,856.21 from the Mastat Winter Recovery Assistance Program to the town for use towards rehabilitation, reconstruction, resurfacing, or preservation of roadways and appurtenances, repair or replacement of traffic control devices, signage, guardrails, and storm grates, or road striping and painting.
Say it again. All those in favor? Great, those are all unanimous. Nice job, Anthea. You know, always with much gratitude for all those grants and earmarks and gifts to the town. They certainly help and go a long way. So, we appreciate all of those. So, thank you very much. Moving on, we can move on to Beth, your report.
Sure. So, first up, I have three appointments this evening. First, in accordance with Section 2-B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Treasurer Collector's Office, Principal Clerk One of Elaine Tripoli from Winchester, and I respectfully request that the board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Is there a motion?
I move we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Elaine Tripoli to the Winchester, to the Principal Clerk One in the Treasurer's Office.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, passes.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works, Joseph DiOrenzo of Woburn, to transfer station foreman, and I request that the board waive the 15-day period.
Is there a motion?
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period to appoint Joseph DiOrenzo to transfer station foreman.
All those in favor?
And last, I have, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment on condition that background checks and physical exam are passed in the Department of Public Works of Ian Long of Brighton to school custodian, and I respectfully request that the board waive the 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Ian Long to Department of Public Works School Custodian.
All those in favor?
And I just had a few other updates. First, I just wanted to take a minute to commend our DPW staff. We had a very challenging weekend weather-wise, and our DPW staff and our custodians were out in all of our buildings, morning, noon, and night, in very cold temperatures, checking to make sure everything was all set. And then, when it wasn't all set, making sure everything got back online. So, I just want to just take a minute to commend them for the work that they did over this past weekend.
Yeah, I think I saw Pete Lawson traveling all over town. I was crossing town, and he was going all over in different directions, and I saw the red vehicles all around. So, at each school and everything, it was tremendous work by our DPW. And knock on wood, we're lucky and fortunate we didn't have any issues. So, great work.
A few other updates. We received notification last week from the Department of Housing and Community Development that the application for the project eligibility under the LIP program for 8789 Cross Street was approved. So, that project can now go forward to submit a comprehensive permit for a 40B application to the zoning board of appeals. So, I expect that to go forward in the next few weeks. I wanted to mention the town's housing production plan. Our plan was adopted by the Select Board in October of 2018 and was approved by DHCD in February of 2019. Under the DHCD guidelines, we have five years. That plan is valid for five years from the date of the DHCD approval. So, that plan will expire in February of 2024. So, we just need to kind of put on our radar that we need to think through the process of how we want to update that plan. Last, when the board, when the plan was originally created, we worked with MAPC to draft the document.
So, stop right there for a second, Beth. So, you know, it would be great if a member or two wanted to take the lead on figuring out how to best do this before I know Mike and Mariano, the two with the most experience, Mariano's stepping off the board. So, we won't ask you to do it. But, you know, if somebody wants to volunteer...
Yeah, happy to stick with that unless somebody else wants to.
Nope, but if somebody wants to help, Mike and...
I'd be happy to.
John and Mike.
Learn, yes.
Great.
And I can reach out, if you'd like, to MAPC to kind of get an idea of what the update kind of process would be, if that's something we're interested in pursuing.
That time will fly by pretty quickly, I'm sure.
I might want to see if the Planning Board will appoint a couple of people also, since they also have to vote. It's a joint vote of the Select Board and the Planning Board to adopt the housing production plan.
Yeah, I think at this point, let's figure out what the process is and...
I think we can update it rather than, you know, redo the entire thing, right? So, hopefully, it'll be a little bit lighter lift, but certainly, it requires public hearings and process.
Thanks for volunteering to do that.
Just a few other quick updates. So, earlier this year, the Select Board adopted the 2023 outdoor dining policy. Those applications are currently available, and they'll are due next week, February 16th, here at the Town Manager's Office. The goal is for the board to review them at your meeting on February 27th. Chamber of Commerce news. So, our longtime Executive Director at the Chamber of Commerce, Kathy Alexander, has decided to retire after 40 years of leadership. So, I just want to take a minute to congratulate her. And Dana Garmy, who's been working at the Chamber since 2020, has been appointed as the new Executive Director. So, congratulations to Kathy, and I'm looking forward to working with Dana in her new role. Springtime meeting, the warrant closes on Friday, March 10th, and the first night of town meeting is scheduled for April 24th. Update from the Town Clerk's Office, the annual census has been mailed, and I just encourage everybody to return those. The census is required to make sure you maintain active on the town's voter registry. In accordance, included in that census mailing is the dog license renewal, as well as the transfer station permit for this year. And then, just a few quick updates on construction projects. The Main Street Bridge repairs are back in full effect. So, they're currently working out there on the upstream side of the bridge. Once the bridge rail cap is set on that side, they'll move to the downstream side as well. Construction on the North Reservoir Dam is substantially complete, except for landscaping and plantings to be done this spring. Transfer station renovation is moving along. We're hoping to demolish the incinerator building either late this month or early March, depending on... We're waiting on Eversource to install a transformer out there. Morocco School Roof is, work is substantially complete. They have a few more things to wrap up over the next few months. The Parkers Modular Classrooms, we have awarded the contract to Triumph Modular, who are currently manufacturing the classrooms. We have a bid out for the site work right now, and we're hoping that work will start in April with classroom installation to begin in June for our September occupancy. And then, we have a couple of other large projects out to bid right now, the Lake Street Bridge project. That project is out, and the bid opening is March 9th. We've invited Wes and Sampson into the next Select Board. We need to talk a little bit more about that project, which will require closure of the Lake Street Bridge for at least two months. And then, that's it for the construction updates. The Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community has a few events. I just wanted to mention they have a program on teen depression, February 7th, and then, they have a lunch with an author, The Emotional Lives of Teenagers, at Redlock Farm on March 22nd. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any questions for Beth on her report? Beth, with respect to the transformer, we're waiting for Eversource to install it? Is that... Where's Eversource?
So, I think there's... My understanding is that they are having supply chain issues with some of the parts there.
So, we've got the transformer. It's some really peculiar odds and ends that we're missing, like elbows, meter sockets, that have been blamed on supply chain issues. We're, I think, March-ish is the new...
New target, yeah.
Thanks, Nick. All right, hearing no other questions, we'll keep moving along. So, next up, public comment. We invite the public to come up. If you want to give public comment, you can raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You'll have three minutes to give your public comment. I'd ask when you come up to please sit at a seat and state your name and address for the record. So, is anyone here for public comment? Pam?
Thank you. Good evening. Pamela Court, Arlington Street, and a town meeting member of Precinct 5. I'd like to respectfully ask the board if there's going to be some clarifying information presented with respect to the discussion of the town budget. In the past, meetings, which are always open to the public, have usually occurred within, with more than a 48-hour notice. And to my knowledge, have always been accessible through WinCam. And given that WinCam isn't always available, there are some other options, like Zoom, that the community, that could be used so the community could follow along and understand the rationale for the budget that's going to be presented at town meeting. So, I have some questions about what I know so far from some of the handouts I've seen, and I'm a little perplexed. I can see that the budget is being proposed by the Chair of the Board, and I'm confused. Has the town manager created a budget to work off of yet? There's some other items in that, excuse me, in that handout that seem to lack some context. And again, because I can't watch it on a recording, it's, I'm left with questions. So, there's a $2 million transfer from free cash to capital after we just passed a $400,000 override for the purpose of funding the Lynch Traffic Studies and improvements, as well as other capital projects for the future. And moreover, a proposal to present an operating override to the public in January 2024, which seems to me a little bit premature, given that this year's budget has yet to be presented to town meeting nor fully evaluated by FinCom. And it's confusing to me why we'd allocate money from free cash if we believe an operational override is going to be necessary less than a year later. So, I'm curious, just some of the rationale behind that. Was there, excuse me, was there a discussion of how the ARPA funds would be used? And why? And was there consensus by the board on that? And there also was a suggestion in one of the handouts that I saw recommending allocating specific spending percentages in specific areas of capital, when capital needs in those areas change from year to year, as does the amount of funds available. There's such a fluidity to those needs, it seems that requiring specific percentages are constricting and could possibly create problems. And it's very likely that there's a rationale, but if there's no way to review the meeting, there's no way for the public to understand what that rationale is. I have enormous respect for the work that you do and the time that you put in, and I'm so grateful for that. I don't take it lightly when I ask you to hold some sort of public meeting or public hearing for the benefit of both town meeting members and the public on such an important topic as the budget, impacting all services, capital projects, and possible tax increases, when we've been asked to support so many overrides of both operational and debt exclusion over the past decade. And given the hard work of our Communications Committee, this runs counter to the spirit of their suggestions, which were endorsed at this past fall town meeting. So, I ask these questions respectfully, and I don't take lightly the amount of work required. And so, that's my comment. Thank you.
Sure, so I'll respond. So, just a couple of things. We've, over the period of January, February, we've had, we had a budget summit, January 7th, on Saturday here. We had a meeting last Friday where it was, you know, continuation of the budget summit. What we've been doing is, you know, essentially getting information from staff. We've been, you know, answering policy questions, general 30,000-foot views of which direction we want to go, and seeking and advising staff of what information we need to make these critical decisions. No votes were taken on Friday. No votes were taken on that Saturday in January when we met. There was a recording of Friday's meeting. And I think Patty, you sent that to Pam, the Zoom recording, this morning. The meeting was posted well in advance of 48 hours. It was open to the public. We had public here. Unfortunately, WinCam couldn't be here to televise it. But certainly, there's no intent to, you know, hide anything or mislead people. What we're doing is doing our job, which is, you know, helping our staff develop the budget. And the advice we're giving from a policy standpoint, you'll see when Beth presents her budget by February 15th. The other thing is that on February 27th, we'll return to that discussion, and the information that we've requested from our staff, we've asked Capitol for a certain list of projects and other information, we'll entertain that night, and that will be a Monday night. That will be televised. It will be open to the public. So, certainly, the public is welcome to attend. So, certainly, we're under deadlines to get things done. We have to coordinate several schedules to have meetings. Unfortunately, that was, you know, one of the only times that worked. And, you know, where we had, in order for Beth to present her budget February 15th, there needed to be questions that were answered. Unfortunately, our Zoom meeting that we had, we had to cancel the Select Board meeting because of the snowstorm. Then, we had a Zoom meeting. It didn't materialize into the policy decisions and questions answered that we needed to have to give our staff a pathway in creating the budget. So, we need to have another meeting in between today and tonight. As you can see, our schedule for tonight is pretty jam-packed with several presentations. So, rather than be here until midnight or 1:00 in the morning, we decided to have a meeting last Friday to tackle those budget issues. But certainly, more will be said about that at our February 27th meeting, and certainly, when Beth presents her budget, you'll see, you know, what we've put forth for the town. And it's the start of the process, right? We need to do this in order to start the process, and then, FinCom goes from there, and the process will play out. So, certainly, more to come on that, but just wanted to just appreciate, Pam, your concern, but I did want to just express, you know, what happened here on Friday, what happened here on Saturday, January 7th, and in the meetings in between that we've had where we've talked about the budget. So, with that, is there's anybody else here for public comment? All right, seeing nobody, we'll keep moving on. It is past 7:45. So, we have two license hearings. So, I'll open up the first one, which is a continuation of the alcohol license, Section 12, for PPT Hospitality LLC, doing business at Purdon Thai, 831 Main Street. This was a continuation of a hearing, and I did speak to council. He called me this morning, and they're looking for further continuance on this hearing. What they're trying to do is transfer or assign their rights to the property into the business to another entity, and they ask for further continuance. They're looking for the last meeting in March to come before the board. So, if it's okay with everyone, I would just administratively continue that hearing until our March 27th meeting. March 27th. Any issue with that? Okay. With that, I will close that hearing, and then, we'll go to our second license hearing, which is the renewal of a common vicurol license, renewal for frozen hoagies. Is there any one in the public that wishes to comment on that? Seeing nobody, any discussion by board members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move we approve the renewal of the common vicurol license, vicurol or license for frozen hoagies.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right, so I'll close that. We'll move on to our first business item, which is the Retirement Board FY23 COLA presentation. I think Stacy is here with members of the Retirement Board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Frary. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Contributory Retirement Board. I serve with four other members, Stacy Ward being the ex officio member, Michael Lucas being your appointed member, and we have a fifth member that we just appointed, who also serves for us, who's not here tonight. We come before you because we have a chance to increase the COLA benefit to our employees. On November 16, 2022, the Governor signed Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 into law. This act provides for local retirement systems with a local option to increase the cost of living adjustment for fiscal year '23 up to 5% on the base amount. The approval of this increase can occur at any time during the fiscal year, but it'll take effect as of July 1st, 2022. So, currently, all of our, we have a $14,000 base, which means that we can annually award a 3% cost of living up to the first $14,000, which pretty much caps out the cost of living increase at $420 for those people who are fortunate enough to have retirement above $14,000. We do have many members who don't even get $14,000 for retirement, so their cost of living isn't even that large. So, this year, we have a chance, a one-time chance, and the board has voted to exercise it based on the Governor's approval that we could allow up to a 5% COLA increase, which would mean that they would merely get a $700 increase this year instead of $420, or $280 additional. You can do the math. It's, you know, pretty much 20 bucks a month or something like that. Very minimal, but in light of the fact that the cost of living has been so high, we feel it's necessary to come before you and support our retirees this way. Just as a reminder, last year in 2022, Social Security people got an increase of 5.9%, and that was on their entire benefit, not limited to the cap that we have. And for 2023, people are looking at 8.7% increase on their entire benefit. Pretty much, if you look at the average, the average benefit nationwide for Social Security is around $35,000. So, you're looking at benefits increases of 8.7% on $35,000, maybe higher. We're trying to get a 5% increase on $14,000. So, our board has voted to do it. The mechanism for approval on this requires that the local board vote on it, and then, we also seek improvement from the...
Executive.
Executive group of the town. So, that could be the Board of Selectment or the Town Administrator. So, we stand here before you. I believe Stacy had a nice brief that we presented with you. Do you need Stacy to comment on that brief, or...
I mean, I think it's, Stacy, if you have anything to add, you can certainly add it.
No, Skip said it all. The Social Security increases have been granted over the last couple of years. Will exceed what our retirees receive, and this is a 2% increase over what we've already voted. We have the opportunity to vote every year of what the COLA increase would be between 1% and 3% or 0%. And our base, we did just increase recently, a few years ago, to 14,000. So, we're right at the average with the COLA base across Massachusetts, but it's still not a very high base. And this would just help our retirees out a bit with the cost of inflation.
And Stacy, this wouldn't, this wouldn't impact the FY24 budget?
It's not going to impact the FY24 appropriation, but what's happening effective January 1st, 2023 anyway is an entire revaluation of the system, and this will just be part of that revow. And the actuary has calculated an estimate of $790,000 over the life of the funding. So, if you look at it annually, it's $150,000 over the life of our current table. But mix that in with all the other changes that will be in effect in January 1st. We're not sure what that is going to entail with the market and other changes in pension. It's a mixed bag at this point. We can't be sure.
That estimate is with our current discount rate? The 775, 790?
Yes, yeah. If everything stayed the same, that would be the estimate.
So, Stacy, we're slated to pay off our pension liability in 2029?
Yes, in 2029, we have, we have a 7.7 increase from now until 2028, and then, 2029 is a decrease of 11%. So, if we weren't having an actuarial study done effective January 1st, our actuaries said just slate this in in the back end, and it would just be another 7% increase that you're used to, and you'd be paid off in 2029. But because the system gets evaluated every other year, everything is, changes when that happens. So, this is something that, with all the other pieces in line and say that we don't have a big loss. The assets took a hit in 2022. Of course, it's our turn to do an evaluation, or evaluation right this year. So, that's going to hit us a little hard, and I don't know that he's going to, they'll make us reduce our discount rate. We're at 7% right now, but we can argue to stay at 7%. There's a lot of things that we can do to mitigate the liability, but I think we'll be okay. We can keep that. I personally like to commit to the 2029 if possible. I know it's a lot to ask the town to increase 7.7% when we've got a 2.5% cap, but it just shows our focus on these long-term liabilities to then switch to OPEB funding, which is the next target.
Questions? Seems like a reasonable request to me. So, this will increase, I'm sorry, it will increase, we're at 7.7% each year.
Yeah.
And what will this increase it to?
Well, if, right now, it would, if, if all was the same, every year, we're up 7.7, 7.7, 7.7, till FY29, we go down 11%.
Right.
So, if that funneled into 2029, it would have really no impact on our funding year. It would still be about a 7% increase instead of an 11% decrease.
Decrease, okay.
Yeah, but like I said, we're having a revow on, but we'll probably done by like May or June. It would be too late for the board to vote with the new revaluation because it's effective for FY23, and I don't think it'll be done in time for us to see the full impact of everything over the last two years.
Okay. And that really depends on what the discount rate is. I mean, we have a very, very conservative discount rate.
Well, we're right on target. I think we're more, we're more in the middle ground now. We used to keep declining, 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 declining. Last year, you know, we were just like, okay, enough already. Everybody else is in print. No one's at the rate that we're at. I think, what I think the actuary should do is that everybody at the same. I know that everyone invests things differently, but it's hard to value and compare yourself to others when we're all over the map. But yeah, that, everything will be taken into consideration, any changes in the retirement benefits, any losses, any investment issues.
I mean, our non-retirement investment earnings are much better this year than last year.
They're better in 2023.
Yeah.
The 2022, the beginning and the middle of the year where, is where we got hit, from what I understand.
I mean, I have no problem supporting this. You know, I think it's the right thing to do, certainly for the people that, you know, are retirees. And it doesn't sound like right now that it's going to have a huge impact.
Well, it will certainly have an impact, but it's part of the whole budget process as to what are our priorities? I mean, do we want to help our retirees? Where they have such a low, low COLA, they don't get a lot of money each year. They still get the same health insurance increases we do. They still get the same cost at the supermarket and the gas station and everywhere else that we do, and it's just a priority. If the retirees are priority, I think the board should vote for this. And if there's other places we should put our money, you should think about it. But I think it's a big, big component of our service is to help our retirees.
Well said. Does everyone feel like they have enough information to decide this tonight? Does everyone feel like they have enough information to, to decide this tonight?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Alright.
What she said.
I mean, you think about it as three hundred dollars, you know what I mean? It's not a lot of money, yeah, it does add to our liability, but I think they will appreciate whatever we can do.
Alright, is there a motion someone wants to make?
I move we approve the one-time COLA increase for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three of five percent for the Winchester contributory retirement.
Mike second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I'm, I'm one of the two elected members of the Retirement Board, so on behalf of the members of the Retirement Board, especially the retirees who this greatly affects, I want to thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Alright, I think Sheila, you're up next, inter-fund borrowing. Sheila, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Good evening to everybody. We have for your approval tonight, an advance of funds in lieu of borrowing, and it's for the Lynch School construction project. As you know, the Lynch School borrowing was authorized back in Fall Town meeting, and then an override was passed for the project in January. So what this allows us to do, we're doing the actual borrowing at the end of March, but some funds are needed during the month of February and March to start the project and, so that the project can proceed as, as needed. We do an inter-fund borrowing so we can advance the funds and then they're reimbursed when the borrowing is done. So the borrowing, as you know, is just over ninety-four million dollars, and we're asking for an advance of nine hundred thousand dollars, which is the estimate the project manager has, has. And it's probably conservative, I mean, it, it's there in case it's needed. Sometimes it's not all needed, but it's the only way we can expend funds prior to the actual borrowing. So we are asking for that. The, the form that you probably have is the Department of Revenue form, and they require us to show all of our reserves and things so that we can prove that in fact we could pay this, and we have enough funds to be able to advance them. So if you are inclined to improve, we just need a vote that authorizes the advanced borrowing of nine hundred thousand dollars.
Is this the deposit for the modular classrooms?
In part, yes.
Got to have those built.
Yes.
Alright, any questions, discussion? Board members? Everyone okay with this?
Yeah.
Alright, have a motion?
I move we authorize nine hundred thousand dollars for advance of funds in lieu of borrowing for the Lynch School of Construction.
Mike second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thanks, Sheila.
Okay, thank you all.
Have a good one.
I think you have the actual form that you'll, everyone needs to sign, Patty, yes, okay.
Can be on your, I don't know, in the morning.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Julia Green from Mass DEP on a pay-as-you-throw presentation. Hi, Julia. Nick, you want to come up too?
I'm afraid, can I sit over here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay, yeah. You want to, you want to be the advanced her, or? Oh, wow, I can see it, great. That was my worry.
So you've done this before, where you know where you can, you just click in a moment or you can use the?
Or use the arrows, right?
Yeah, whichever one you're comfortable with.
Control myself better that way, with the arrows. Alright. Great, I'm Julia Green, I'm with the Mass DEP, and I'm a municipal assistance coordinator, and I work with thirty-six cities and towns in this greater metropolitan area. So I'm here to talk about pay-as-you-throw, and I think you all have an understanding of pay-as-you-throw. There was a pilot at the transfer station for a number of years. But Mass DEP really doesn't consider that a quote-unquote pay-as-you-throw program, because it wasn't everyone, it was just a group that was using the model. So it's basically per-unit costs or unit fees. The idea is on a utility model, so you pay what you throw, and that's where the name comes from. And the idea is that it, it incentivizes people to reduce their trash, because they don't want to pay for throwing out trash. So, and it also, you combine it with other programs so that people are diverting in other ways too. They're diverting through reuse and through recycling. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And so back to the utility model, it's just like paying for electricity or paying for gas. You pay for what you use. So that, that would be the idea at the transfer station too. You, you pay for the trash that you throw out. So in, Mass DEP pushes this model a lot because it's the single most effective tool to reduce waste. And so we, we, we come out at night to talk about it. So program design options, I have highlighted there imprinted trash bags, because really
Kind of much bags.
It's the one that makes, makes the most sense. Well, they can be small, maybe at your transfer station, or they can be up to thirty-three gallons too, but they can be smaller bags too, and you can sell a variety of bags. So people with a little bit of trash, they would buy the smaller bags, et cetera. But I have it highlighted there more because other towns might use tags or stickers. And a lot of that is a throwback, because they started their program like twenty years ago, and the bags weren't really the unit to use. You could go with stickers or tags, but I wouldn't suggest it, I would go with the bags. And then the other one is thirty-five gallon trash cart or barrel, and that's really a pay-as-you-throw curbside program, so no, no real meaning here. So in Massachusetts right now, there are ninety-six municipalities that have drop-offs, just like Winchester. We consider your program at the transfer station a drop-off. And then there are forty-six communities that have curbside, and thirteen that have both a transfer station, drop-off program, and a curbside program. So it's a hundred and fifty-five municipalities in Massachusetts. And overall, they probably have between twenty-five and fifty percent less trash, trash per household being thrown than those communities that don't have pay-as-you-throw. So this is just a quick map to show you where we are with pay-as-you-throw in Massachusetts. So the red are the drop-off communities, and green are the curbside communities, and those lavender ones are both. So this is just a, a chart we made recently that shows like, the most effective programs we have are actually at drop-offs. Full pay-as-you-throw, drop-off, only have about a thousand sixty-six pounds per household of trash per year, as opposed to, if we look at the other end of it, which is, or stepping back is that, that's a bag drop-off program. The rest of all of these columns show curbside programs and what their trash limits are. So the first one is a bag program at the curb, and the rest are these carts. So as you can see, a ninety-five gallon cart would have one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven pounds per, per year. And why I want to show you that is because I want to get to the next slide, which is, I'm comparing a full pay-as-you-throw drop-off with one thousand sixty-six, and here's Winchester's drop-off for two thousand twenty-one at two thousand two hundred and seventy-three. So pounds per household. So really, you know, there's very little, if I, if I go back to that, you know, ninety-five gallons is a lot. The average trash per household in pounds for Massachusetts is around forty-five pounds. So you can see, forty-five gallons is the average. So you can see that Winchester has, has a lot of trash per household, at least the ones that use the transfer station. So how much trash did we throw out in two thousand twenty-one? So this map shows that in red are the municipalities that have, that, that have a lot of trash per household. And as you get lighter, the green, the orange, and the, and yellow have less trash per household. So now I'm going to zoom in here, and we can see Winchester. So it's kind of like, what are your neighbors doing, has a big impact too as well. And as you can see, Mass DEP is trying to, you know, take over the world with the pay-as-you-throw, which is across, cross-hatching to your west. And so we're, we're, we're moving along well. And north and east of Winchester, you know, we're still working there as well to improve trash per household. So the next one I want to show is how do full pay-as-you-throw drop-off programs fare over time? So I think the oldest one here is CCONC in nineteen ninety-two. What I wanted to show is if you look at the last column there, pounds per household per week, you can see all those numbers are really low, and it doesn't matter how long the program has been in operation. And the Western numbers, because Western just went pay-as-you-throw in two thousand twenty-one. And that's only for one quarter, the last quarter, they started in October, or October first, two thousand twenty-one. And that dropped their trash down considerably, and even more so now this year. So over time, it still holds trash per households down. People react to pay, pay-as-you-throw and conserve more. So many ways to fund the program, new and updated programs. So if we look at the big box for us, and municipal program costs is, the fixed costs are collection and transportation, the transfer station or drop-off operation, staffing, et cetera. Recyclables processing, which is, you know, expensive right now because of the changes in the market. And then a key is to predictable source of revenue to cover fixed costs. So what we suggest on the left side is you fund those fixed costs by, through the tax base or a flat fee at the transfer station, which would be normally the transfer station sticker or combination. And then the variable costs are basically trash disposal. And, you know, you, you look across, based on tipping fees of three to five years out, and then also the trash tons, current in your estimated reduction with the pay-as-you-throw program. So, you know, you estimate those revenues, and you keep checking on it every year. But basically, you're paying for your variable costs through the bags, through the sales of the bags. So the next slide here is, these are comparable, the same comparable municipalities and how they fund their programs. So you can see it varies. You can see, I just want to point out that Weston and Halifax, they don't have a transfer station fee, although Weston just instituted one this year because they found that they wanted to keep more control or understanding about who was using the transfer station. So now they're charging a nominal fee of twenty-five dollars a year so that people come and get the sticker, you know? But basically, you know, they decide to do their tax base and, and fund seventy percent of their transfer station through the tax base and the rest of the bag sales. But this is where you have, you can, you can choose how you want to do it, obviously.
So what is the average price of like a tall kitchen trash bag in this?
Well, it depends, you know, and so that's on these towns too. And so some of these haven't changed their bag price in twenty years or ten, twenty years. So if we, the Western just went pay-as-you-throw, and they're charging forty, four dollars for a thirty-three gallon bag, which is a large trash bag. And they're charging two dollars for like a thirteen gallon trash bag, which is a kitchen, that's, that's the kitchen trash can size that you would buy at the supermarket. So, and then some communities just sell one bag size. They all do it slightly differently.
For here, just for the per visit fee, is that someone who didn't have a sticker?
Yeah, you know, I don't know what that is, actually, to tell you the truth. It could be that a one-time, like, somebody was doing a clean-out or something, and then they want to use some service at the transfer station, and then they, they have to just pay one time because they're not a usual user of the transfer station, but they are a resident.
I know Westminster, they give you a preloaded card that you swipe in, that you're allowed to swipe in so many times to the transfer station.
Do you know, like, is there a number for the average pounds per bag?
Yeah, about twenty-five pounds for a thirty-three gallon bag. Because like, so if you see the model of curbside with the cart, it's the thirty-five gallon cart, and that's about twenty-five pounds is what they estimate, you know? So, so it's about the same for that thirty-three gallon bag.
So for a thirteen, it would be just the same fraction?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright. So then we have these complementary programs, because you see across that some pay-as-you-throw programs do better than others. So one is having a food waste collection, which you already have at the transfer station, and then also bulky item collection fees, which I think you have too, right?
For upholstered furniture.
Oh, upholstered.
Not, not wooden furniture at this point.
Okay, alright. So, you know, you might want to revisit that, but, and then reuse programs. You have a great swap area with that big tent and everything. So, and all ideas of just promoting reuse programs. But the last one, comprehensive private hall regulations and mandatory recycling, this would require that all private haulers that pick up trash at people's homes, that they provide them with a bundled service, meaning that they provide them with both recycling and trash. And the reason why Mass DEP really suggests this is, is that you're not having people leave the transfer station because they're, you know, expected to recycle. So, and also because we're really trying to get the, the private haulers under the tent in the sense of recycling, because we want everyone to recycle in the state of Massachusetts. So these are, this comprehensive private hall regulations, we have a template, and if you drop those, you'll be able to apply for a pay-as-you-throw grant. It's one of the requirements that goes with the pay-as-you-throw grant program is that you also adopt those comprehensive private hall regulations. So anyway, going back to the top, there are technical assistants, it's eighty hours of my time, which basically work with your team to do the financial analysis, figure out how you want to do your pay-as-you-throw program, how you want to do funding of the transfer station, just all that analysis. And then also to draft the private hall regulations and help draft the pay-as-you-throw implementation plan and come to any meetings if you wanted that. So, and then the, the grant is ten dollars per household, so I think about five thousand people use the transfer station, so it's about a fifty thousand dollar grant to implement the pay-as-you-throw program. You could use it for buying bags, but also for making other changes at the transfer station for the program. And then because you would become a full pay-as-you-throw program, Mass DEP has a program called Recycling Dividends Program, which is like a, a grant program that you, that municipalities receive money funding every year.
So best practices.
Yeah.
You're rewarded for best practices.
Yeah, so that would increase probably, probably if you went full pay-as-you-throw with comprehensive hall regulations adopted, Winchester would receive about twelve thousand dollars a year from Mass DEP for your programs, so, and that's it.
Thank you. So questions? What is our, our action item tonight?
So I guess, you know, one of the things that the working group had recommended was that we consider applying for this technical assistance grant to, if we're serious about really considering pay-as-you-throw. That's the direction we think we're going to move in. This would be the logical next step is for us to apply for that technical assistance grant so we can work with Julia and her vast knowledge to help us understand what it would be, you know, to implement that.
So I guess my question would be to Julia, what, if we do apply for technical assistance?
Yeah.
What, what is the commitment at that point? Is it?
Just committed to do the, go through the process and figure out what you want to do. You don't have to commit that you're going to, at the end of it, that you will go pay as you throw, but you're just.
It's matching hours too, isn't it? That we have to put in so much time or reserve?
Oh, okay, what you're, yes. Yeah, you have to have matching hours. You have to have a project leader. And that could be Nick or it could be somebody else. It could be if you have a sustainability committee or a recycling committee, who am I, who will I work with?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if, what do we do first? Do we go through the technical assistance process and then seek public input, you know, with, after the process and see how it plays out at that point? Or do we seek public input first on whether we should even go down this path? Is, I guess, what I'm just wrestling with.
Sort of take it a step further back. I mean, when would you hypothetically want to implement this program? Probably January.
Correct.
Of next year. And what, you know, what sort of timelines would we need to get, let's you know what sort of time you're playing with here?
I guess that's a good question. Julia, how long does it take to usually go through this process?
Well, that really depends. But I would say that if you wanted to implement in January, in a center of fast track, because, well, you can apply for a pay as you throw grant at any time. If you did, so if you make the decision in August that you want to go pay as you throw in the Board of Selectment or whoever the decision maker is on that process, then you would apply to Mass D E P even that late and say, we want to implement January first. And they will probably, they will try their best to find that funding because this is their number one program. However, they would prefer that you apply on, by June twelfth of this year because that's the deadline for our grant cycle, you know? And then you would probably hear back from Mass D E P in October or November that you have the grant. And then from there, you could move into paying for your, getting ready for your bags and implementing the program, so.
Can I ask you questions? One for probably Nick and Mariana about this. When we, when there was the transfer station working group, I know that this was discussed, but did that incorporate any public comment beyond the working?
Yeah.
And then is, does, with the technical assistance, would that cover sort of public input and how to sort of present and capture comments from the public?
Yeah, it can, yeah.
Other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, you said that the grant cycle is, applications have to be?
Yeah, the application opens in April and it closes.
This is for the pay as you throw?
Yeah, or for all of our grants.
Those are D E P grants following that cycle.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't find out until September?
September, October. However, if you went through technical assistance, and one of the big things is they, I would help you create your implementation plan. So Mass D E P is looking at all that. They were all waiting with bated breath. Oh, is Winchester going to go pay as you throw? And we're ready to go with them. So I would say that if you make those decisions, you know, along the way by June, if you have the decision made by June, apply, you know?
Apply for the technical, sorry.
No, technical assistance, apply right now.
I see. So you're, the grant, is that other program that you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah, they call it a technical assistance grant. It's just for my time.
So that's like a rolling admission we can apply?
Yes, and you can apply anytime.
After we do the halla regs. That's, that's one of the caveats to her time now is the private halla regs, correct?
Yeah, you'd have to show that those are, so let's step back. The technical assistance grant you can apply for right now. You don't have to have the comprehensive private halla regs ready to go or anything like that, you know? But you should try to get those adopted, you know, by the time that you're applying for the grant. So does that seem like it would fit your cycle for applying for the grant in?
I mean, I think the earliest we would, I mean, realistically, I think the earliest we would implement something, this would be probably like March, right? Or, I mean, that's typically when your sticker comes due.
Well, sticker, the window is January to March to get the sticker on.
Right, but we send the census out in January.
Yeah.
And if we're going to have some type of fee associated with the transfer station and then we're going to start charging, you know, charging people for bags, I would imagine.
Yeah, we would need to have this finalized by like December of twenty twenty-three so that, and that's pushing it, right? November is probably better so that Mary Ellen has time or however we're going to publicize this to kind of, you know, work it through the system and notify residents and figure out what our process is going to be, if we're going to have a transfer station permit still or if we're going to cover everything with the bag fees. I guess that's the question, right? Different communities, different ways.
Or how you do it, what the mix is. I mean, so you could, a little bit of everything too, yeah.
Is there a, purely operationally on bags? Is there a timeframe for ordering bags?
Printing bags and having them ordered and delivered? Getting stores to sell them?
Yeah, you know.
We had a pre-existing relationship with Waste Zero, which was a bag vendor we used for smart bags.
Right.
We might not get the town seal on, but we'll get bags, right?
We ran into the whole COVID supply chain issue at the tail end of the SMART program where we were using multiple towns' bags because.
Oh, were you, really? Oh, I didn't know.
We couldn't get the.
Yeah, there were a lot of supply chain issues, but it seems like those have been resolved, yeah.
And Nick, from a standpoint, if we went to pay as you throw, basically anything that goes on that conveyor belt would need to be in a bag?
Correct.
A pay as you throw bag?
Looking at John, it looks construction projects. More stuff there.
Still be able to weigh in bag.
Would, this is a question for the six-year-old in my life. Would the swap shop be able to extend its opening time?
Past seven P M.
Operating time during the year.
My thought is, I'm very hesitant to keep it open in the winter just because I don't want to be shuffling around bureaus. I don't want anyone carrying glass and slipping on ice. I mean, if. Could we? Yes. Am I hesitant? Yes. Hey, any follow-up to that or?
No, no, we've got stuff to get rid of, but also we.
What point in the process do we figure out how much it costs the average family per year? Average consumer, is it, so if we're paying two seventy-two a ton, right?
Two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two, sorry. And it goes to, now it's going to go to four hundred. I'm not horribleizing, I'm just trying to understand what that is.
Well, it's actually probably going to be cheaper because you're going to have the bag, the bag costs, you know? So you get all of that bag revenue and then you can lower your transfer station sticker, yeah.
So.
But is it cheaper, I mean, I guess for the consumer, is it cheaper?
It's a spectrum. So it's cheaper for the people who produce less trash. It's more expensive for the people that produce more trash.
Exactly.
It's a spectrum there.
Yeah.
What about the average?
Well, the average is. The average should be the same.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So I just, I mean, two bags at two dollars a bag, you know, two dollars, two bags a week, right? Is two hundred and eight bucks for the year.
Two thirty-three gallon bags a week is a lot of trash.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking the tall trash bags.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, two dollars for those. So, you know, the reason I asked for the weight is because, so twenty-five pounds cost us, cost the town about a dollar fifteen to dispose of, right? We pay what, ninety dollars a ton?
Approximately ninety-two or fifty.
Plus driving costs and whatever, call it a hundred.
Yeah. Slightly more than that. Our indirect hauling costs are fifteen.
Okay, so it costs more. So it's like, costs like a dollar fifty for every twenty-five pounds, right? Because a ton is two thousand pounds, right? So, you know, I mean, that's, that's the issue that the transfer station has is that most of the costs for the town are variable and it's based on how much trash people throw away and we charge a flat fee. On the other side of the D P W, we have the water utility where most of the costs are actually fixed, but we charge variable based on how much people use, right? So there's a disconnect there. And the average should cost the same because if nobody changes their habits, the cost will be the same and we run the transfer station at a break even. So the average cost will be the same. But hopefully it will mean people throw away less, so the cost will go down, so the average will go down.
The only issue with that is the whole capital improvement fees.
I think you'd still have a.
That's part of the.
I think you'd still have a sticker with a capital improvement fee on it.
And there's still some fixed costs.
Eighty-something?
So it's twenty-two for this year, going up to eighty in January of twenty-four. Unless we, unless we do some other things that we've talked about as part of the working group to try to bring in, you know, increased commercial revenues that can help us offset that.
So I guess in my head, I'm just trying to figure out if we go ahead and go through the technical assistance process now or we seek public comment first? I mean, it's, what do people think? I mean, I don't.
Seems to me that we jump in right now with technical assistance and, you know, it'll be a public process as well. We've had a lot of public conversation about pay as you throw. And when you look at the numbers and you look at that high tonnage for our community, you know, we need to, you know, divert some of that trash that's just going into the incinerator, right? And so we need to do a lot better. We're one of the worst, so I think that technical assistance will help.
And I get it, it's very convenient, like since we stopped SMART, right? It's very convenient to just be able to throw anything away. And, you know, it's more convenient for me, but at the same time, it's like, what's the sticker going to get to? You know, four hundred dollars, right?
Food waste is somewhere where we can make, you know, huge gains, you know, very quickly. And that's the, kind of the worst waste that we have in a way, so.
And it's the heaviest.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Unfortunately, at this point, food waste is on parity with trash and our disposal costs.
Right.
That we could pull a lot of the food out, it's going to be negligible in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's one of the things we talked about with the working group was trying to incentivize curbside food waste collection because the more, if we use, for example, a vendor like Black Earth, the more subscriptions they get in town, the lower the price will be. So it wouldn't be a cost to the town where we're paying Black Earth to get rid of it would be an individual cost on a homeowner basis.
We did talk about doing like maybe a sticker discount. If somebody has an annual subscription to Black Earth, right? I mean, there are ways that we can do that.
To incentivize it, yeah.
Nick, when we report our numbers for household trash, does that, do you parse, is there any way to parse out what the schools are generating versus households? Or how do you get that number?
So, yeah, the, when we, when we report that, it's kind of aggregated together that school, waste and recycling are part of our tons per household because it's part of the community. We can pull it out. It's not a great metric because, you know, the town trash truck will stop at town hall. Then it'll go to Morocco.
Yeah.
Like, so town buildings are awful, also included in that municipal waste that, we do track it. But when reporting, we report it as pounds per households. We pull out the commercial waste.
So let me ask, so would the schools have to go to pay as you throw as well?
No. No, that's not, that would not be the intent there.
No, I was just curious, I mean, like how.
Mrs. O'Leary is not going to have to buy a pay as you throw bag for a trash truck.
No, no, I was just curious that, like, how it would work.
For comparison, comparisons with other municipalities, they also include their school waste in building, in town buildings too. So, you know, some of them might not, but for the most part, they all do. So that isn't one of the reasons why your trash numbers are so high, you know?
I think it's we have a very generous program, is what it boils down to.
What's very generous? Our trash sticker program?
Yeah. You bring in wooden furniture and just, you're allowed to dump it. There's no fee associated with it there. No. I think that's part of the reason why our numbers are higher is because we're, have a higher level of service, you could argue.
We're inclusive.
Maybe all the New Hampshire license plates at the transfer station too.
One of the things in the technical assistance too can be like, just, one of the things that we'd like to see municipalities do is improve their websites with information on diverting and the importance of diverting, you know, out of the waste stream. So those are some of the suggestions too. I haven't looked at Winchester's website lately, but it's more, as I remember, it's more focused towards just the transfer station, what to do and not so much about trash and recycling and composting and other diversion activities. Reuse, reduce.
All right, so what do, do people feel like they have enough information to decide this tonight? Do you want more information, further discussion? What do you want to do?
I have enough.
And there's no strings attached if we go through the technical assistance program?
I know, that's right. But you can't go hire some other, you know, consultant. It's me you get.
We're good, sold.
Do you need a vote of the board to ask for the technical assistance or what?
I can be directed by the town manager or if you guys want to seal it in a vote?
What do people want to do? If there's a motion, we could entertain it.
So I move we.
Direct the town manager to work with D P W to apply for the technical assistance, pay as you throw technical assistance grant.
We redirect the town manager to work with the D P W to apply for the pay as you throw technical assistance grant for the transfer station.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Here are none, it passes. All right, well, thank you both for coming in.
That was a very good presentation, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Couldn't get the right word there.
Okay, next up, we have our presentation from, I think, Tool, Transportation Master Plan Update. Sorry, while they're setting up, I see Ken leaving. I assume Ken will be involved in this process.
I would imagine so, yes.
He was in the transfer station working as well.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Alexis Fiderata, I'm with Tool Design. I'm a transportation planner.
Jeff Rose, I'm also with Tool Design.
Thanks for coming.
So we were last here, I think, April last year to introduce this whole plan. Now it's in draft form, so we're coming to give an update and share next steps for finalizing and open it up for comment from the select board. So to start, we'll give a quick refresher on what we've been up to since we were last here in April and go over the process for, that we used for identifying transportation projects, how they're prioritized and the next steps for finalizing the whole plan. So a review of the objectives that we've been guided by. The first one is to strengthen the town's long-term vision and goals guiding transportation efforts. The second, to produce a prioritized list of street design projects that the town can use to inform long-term capital funding plans along with supporting policy and program initiatives. And then the last one is to develop strategies to streamline the project development and coordinate across departments to get these things done. So today we'll primarily be focusing on that one in the middle. But over the last year or so, we led internal long-term vision and strategy workshops with town staff. We focused community engagement mostly on last summer and received about five hundred responses to an online survey and mapping tool that was circulated around the town that some of you all may have taken. And we developed and prioritized project recommendations. So transportation projects in this plan at a glance. It includes seventy-four projects to enhance streets and intersections with safety and multimodal design features. Of those, thirty-three projects include recommendations around slowing down traffic and speed management. Fifty-three include pedestrian crossing improvements. Twenty-five projects fill gaps in sidewalks and improve ADA accessibility. And seventeen projects create or enhance existing bike connectivity.
Can I ask you a question? Does this?
Because this is the thing, that, uh, topic that we get the most complaints about, or concerns about from residents, probably be heard every other time. And so, I don't know if it's, I haven't really checked into the registered cars and so forth, and I think it's a lot of us a byproduct of waste. But my question is, I mean, first of all, we only have so much money for capital, so you could go hog wild doing all traffic. But is your experience, or Tool's experience, that as you do these improvements to calm traffic, waste says, oh, okay, well, they're going twenty-seven miles an hour here, so now we're gonna go over to this street and go thirty-five miles an hour? So you're in this never-ending cycle of improving street after street after street? Do, I'm just curious, like, what, you know, what happens in other, other towns, have you, maybe you haven't done, maybe there's not enough data out there to really comment on that, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a really good question, um, I think it highlights the importance of approaching this, kind of in this way, like a coordinated plan. Um, so a number of the recommendations in this plan are to study options, um, which could be done for a neighborhood at a time, for example, to make sure that traffic calming on one street, like you said, doesn't just reroute people onto another. But it's certainly something that a lot of, uh, communities like Winchester are fighting against, is that, I mean, to some extent, you're trying to trick an algorithm.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, these recommendations, uh, where studies have been completed, um, are pretty well-defined and might get down to the level of, you know, a specific type of treatment or specific intersections, uh, but in other places, the project is a recommended study, uh, for example, for a whole corridor or, uh, a redesign. So the, the process by which projects, uh, were identified included a crash analysis, um, the public input that I mentioned previously, a review of past and ongoing studies, and input from the town staff and the consulting staff. So, the crash analysis, um, this map shows, uh, crashes in Winchester between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-one, um, weighted, uh, by mode and severity, so the size of each dot shows the severity, the smallest dots being property damage only, the medium-sized, uh, being crashes that resulted in injury, and the largest size being, uh, crashes that resulted in a fatality, of which there's only one.
How far did you go back, in years?
Twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, so five complete years. Uh, and then the color indicates the mode of each crash, so the green dots are motor vehicle-only crashes, orange bike crashes, and red pedestrian crashes. Um, excluded from this map are motor vehicle crashes that only resulted in property damage. Um, so, we use this as a guide to make sure that, um, we looked at potential improvements for all of the areas where there have been serious crashes in Winchester, and especially where they're clustered.
Uh, sorry, can you just, so motor vehicle crashes that only resulted in property damage is like different from this small red dot of a pedestrian property damage kind of, uh, at twelve o'clock? I'm just trying to understand what a pedestrian property damage crash looks like that doesn't involve a motor vehicle?
Um, I guess it's a little bit of a misnomer, that's just how crashes are coded. That would be an incident in which, um, there was a pedestrian crash, but that did not result in injury.
Okay.
So, sorry, that's a car crash into a pedestrian, and only the car received damage, then?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Um, on to public input, um, so this is what the public input mechanism looked like on the web mapping tool. Um, so participants were invited to draw points or draw lines, and then they could share with us uh, what kind of improvements they'd like to see at each location, um, and any input they have about, um, how things work there today. And so, this is a summary of all of those comments, so along the streets, um, the yellow segments received the fewest comments, um, or at least one comment, and the dark purple received, um, eight or more. And then at intersections, the size of each dot, um, shows how many comments were there. So, we also ensured that we were identifying projects for all of the areas that received the most input. And then we also, uh, looked really closely at past and ongoing studies, um, including the twenty-sixteen Complete Streets Prioritization Plan, uh, the Cross Street Study, the Highland Avenue Study, and, uh, the ongoing Lynch School Study. And so, these projects in a way are identified into different implementation pathways, um, the first being enhancement projects, um, which will require some combination of funds for further study, engineering design, and construction, and range from minor crossing enhancements to full intersection reconstructions. Um, so these are places where we're adding new safety features, um, new multimodal features like bike lanes, et cetera. Um, maintenance projects, um, focus on, uh, maintaining existing infrastructure, um, will be managed by DPW and include striping, crosswalks, signage, uh, curb ramps, and just general maintenance. And then partnership projects will require coordination with another municipality or state agency. Um, so these are, uh, locations like Cambridge Street, Mystic Valley Parkway, and Bacon Street intersection, um, South Border Road, et cetera. Um, and so here, we use this as an opportunity to bring together recommendations from some other plans, for example, the DCR Parkway Study, uh, that was completed a few years back. Um, and this list is intended for the town to use as an advocacy and communication tool with these partners. So, this is a map of all of the projects, um, here in blue are locations where we identified enhancement projects. Um, red, maintenance projects, the partnership projects are in yellow, um, and then purple is where enhancement and maintenance projects overlap. Uh, it's not super easy to see here, but I believe you have a handout. And then, this is a map of just enhancement projects split up by estimated cost. Um, so the yellow, um, lines and points are low-cost projects that could be completed for under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, red, medium cost, between one hundred and five hundred thousand, and purple, high cost, uh, over five hundred thousand.
So I think in our packet, we have an example of, there must be a list that breaks all these out.
Mm-hmm.
But we, we haven't seen that list at this point, um, so we've seen the map, but there's a list that's generated of these seventy-four projects that you've identified. And now the question is, how do we prioritize them, right? Is that the next step?
Yeah, so they, we, we, we did an initial prioritization as part of the work that they've done to date.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, what were the factors for prioritizing, is it?
I think that's the next.
Oh, is that the next one, sorry.
Two sides, right, yeah.
Can I ask a, can I ask a cost question?
Sure.
Um, so, eh, like, I see kind of these, this grid of streets in purple.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, eh, and that's a high cost, over five hundred thousand, and I see, you know, that seems, there don't seem to be that many that are in high cost. Is that just because that is something that's incorporating that whole area, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, getting to the concerns expressed earlier about just diverting, uh, fast traffic onto neighboring streets. Um, Beth's recommendation was that we consider the Flats neighborhood as one traffic calming area, and study, um, potential traffic calming features altogether.
Yeah, we've had a lot of feedback from the neighborhood in that area, about the traffic coming from, um, from the Wildwood Street quarter to the Cross, um, Church Street quarter.
Uh, so getting on to prioritization, um, all of the enhancement projects, um, that were showed on the cost map were prioritized relative to other projects in the same cost bucket. Um, so the factors that we looked at were safety, um, based on, uh, the number of crashes that occurred at a street intersection during that five-year period shown in the previous map, um, weighted by mode and severity, such that places where, um, crashes causing injuries, or, um, places where, uh, pedestrian and bike crashes have occurred would be weighted higher. Um, we looked at multimodal connections, um, so how these projects might enhance access to Winchester's commuter rail stations, um, or to access points to the Tri-Community Greenway. Um, we prioritize by public comments, so number of public comments received, um, through that web mapping tool. Um, proximity to the nearest school for each project, um, since access to schools, um, has been a major theme throughout this project. Proximity to ex- activity centers, um, which double-counts schools, um, just to highlight how important they are. Um, and proximity as well to parks and recreation destinations, civic buildings, and other important destinations in town. Um, and then the last thing was street activity, which takes into account, um, the street and land use characteristics. So, um, we ranked major roads higher, um, that they might have, um, just greater daily traffic and, um, a more complex mix of users on a daily basis, and same with, um, areas with greater population density. So, the final plan, um, all of these projects are in a spreadsheet, um, that we pulled out a sample of here. Uh, so for each project, um, we have the location, um, corridors and intersections, um, a project type or types. Um, many of these projects get it, um, many different town goals around transportation, like, uh, here we have sidewalk and accessibility improvements, uh, traffic calming, pedestrian crossing treatments, uh, bike connectivity, and safety, though to some extent, they're all addressing safety. Um, a description of the recommendations, so here we pulled out examples, um, from Cross Street, which, uh, was the subject of a study, and so these are pretty detailed recommendations. And then for each project, we've identified, um, whether funding will be needed for additional study and additional design, or just construction. Um, the planning level cost estimate, which was those three buckets that we introduced earlier, and then there's a couple, uh, columns for the town to use going forward for tracking, uh, like possible funding sources, um, notes and status. So, next steps, um, we'll be presenting this at a public meeting on February fifteenth. Um, once it's been subject to public comment, um, the final plan will be issued in, issued this spring, and the engineering department will own and manage this plan going forward. So that's all we had for presentation.
Who have you presented this to so far, what groups?
T-Tac.
T-Tac, okay. Are there any other groups planned to present this to, or no?
Well, I think the intent was to try to invite folks to the public meeting, um, which would be a Zoom meeting on, um, February, so we, it's over a week away, next Wednesday.
I see we have some chairs here from various groups, T-Tac, Capital, members of the public, uh, okay. I don't know, I mean, this is a capital-sponsored project, right, this, this study, did they fund it?
They did, yeah.
Do you have any questions or anything, this time?
I think we'd like to see the data.
Does T-Tac, it does?
More detail into what's going on, um, it's a bit opaque at this point as to, without seeing the actual data as to how so these things were put together. That would be, that would be my initial reaction.
Does T-Tac have the data?
No, so we have an, uh, um, Tools have a few things in the spreadsheet, it's a large spreadsheet, it's not, like, easily created into a PDF or something. So, um, I think they had a few things they were kind of finalizing, as, as much as you can finalize a draft living document, um, before we were gonna give it out to people.
So that would be the final report, would be this?
Well, and I think, you know, after the meeting on the fifteenth, we can certainly send it out to people to review before we kind of finalize anything, um, as well.
My question is, you had stated earlier, it didn't involve motor vehicle accidents only? In the initial conversation, you had said this doesn't include motor vehicle to motor vehicle accidents?
Uh, did, that map did not include, uh, motor vehicle to motor vehicle crashes that did not result in an injury or fatality.
Okay, but what about, you know, the dollar value of that, if the motor vehicle was a property damage, either to town property or to other motor vehicles?
They were included in the prioritization, just at a lower weight, so that the town can focus resources on places where improvements can reduce severe crashes.
When will that information and data be available?
Yeah, so like I said, you know, we're, Tool is kind of finalizing, um, the, the draft spreadsheet, it's a, it's not an easily, um, it, like I said, it's not easy, something I could easily hand out in a PDF form, so I think we, we are certainly happy to circulate the spreadsheet so folks can, you know, take a look at it, um, look under the hood a little bit, yep.
Now you can say this is a responsibility to engineering department.
Right.
Go ahead, Ben, you got something?
Thanks.
Just quick, we gotta keep moving.
I'm Ben Keeler, thank you, um, so just a couple of things, and so again, I, I, you know, appreciate, uh, Tool's work and, uh, for bringing this up to, to a public meeting, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of data, so we did get the same presentation, uh, but really, nothing, uh, more detailed than that, which is okay, I understand that the, you know, the process is, uh, sort of ongoing. I would just point out, and I, I made this comment, uh, during the presentation, uh, last week for T-Tac. You know, the, the goals, there were three goals. The first was a vision and a plan, the second was a list of projects, and the third was reducing the cycle time. Trying to figure out interdepartmental communication and how we can, uh, you know, really bring some things to the table quickly. Um, this, what we've seen so far is talking about the projects, but not seeing the projects, but we haven't seen a lot in terms of the vision, or way, you know, strategies to actually make some impact. So I would just encourage you guys as the board to keep pressing on those two things, like, the projects are gonna be the projects, I mean, we all live here, we probably know what most of the projects are, um, and appreciate that having the detail to be able to package up, work with capital, um, you know, be flexible when money is available, that's great. But we don't, it, this does not present anything as it relates to a vision, uh, there's no bike, um, coverage here, this is roads mostly. Um, there's no discussion about, um, uh, uh, transportation, town transportation, um, services, and how we might be able to leverage those going forward. And then, uh, similarly, you know, eh, I would, when you look at this plan, there's a, there's a difference between the maintenance projects and the enhancement projects. The enhancement projects require, or like, traffic calming, um, and some of those, those require studies, and they require more work from Tool. I would argue that, you know, we need to figure out a way to make more of those maintenance projects, traffic calming friendly, or have DPW be able to advance those without further studies, it's costing us a lot of money, it's, and that's not, that's, that's nothing against Tool. We just need to figure out a way to, that DPW can actually take some of these things on without studies. And I understand there's technical assistance is required, but, I mean, in order to get things done, we have to stop talking about the plan and actually get it done.
Thanks, Ben.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. So I think, you know, tonight's purpose was an update, see where we're at at this point in time, you know, obviously, it's still a work in progress. Um, seems like we're making progress. You know, it's, it's a daunting task, I can't imagine, I mean, this is a tough town from a traffic, parking, roadway, safety, intersection standpoint, so you had your work cut out for you, to start. Um, I'm surprised no one's brought up parking tonight, so, usually everything ends in parking here.
I didn't say that.
Um, but this is definitely, you know, you know, heading in the right direction, um, and I just think it's important to get, you know, the stakeholders and the public, you know, input and give them time to digest this and get meaningful dialogue from everyone. and give them time to digest this, and get meaningful dialogue from everyone. And as Ben says, you know, figure out a plan to move this along, rather than just sit on a shelf.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's about parking.
What?
It's not about parking.
It's not about parking?
One of the things you mentioned was there's 25 projects, which are about gaps in the sidewalk and ADA accessibility. Could you just give a little bit more detail into, is that sort of resolving things that should be sort of ADA accessible now, or is that sort of in some ways like new things where the sidewalk, you know, stops here, picks up down the block, and, or a mix of those?
It's a combination of projects where a sidewalk might just not exist for a whole block or a whole street, and places like where you mentioned, the sidewalk might change sides without a safe crossing.
Okay, thanks.
So, my comment would be, I would like to see more of a draft plan, right? I mean, the slides were, were great as a 30,000-foot view, I'd like to see a 10,000-foot view before we call, we just get a final plan, right? I would like to be able to comment on a, a little bit more detailed, even if it's just a draft plan, but see, you know, there was a comment about bike connections, right? And I saw on the one project that you showed on the cross street, there was a connect bikes from the Greenway to Main Street, right? That was one, right? And there might already be in the draft plan, and it's just we haven't seen the draft plan to know what comments to give you, before it becomes a final plan, right? So, I'd like to see the draft plan. The spreadsheet, in whatever format, can be sent out to us and to T-TAC, to be able to give you feedback before it goes final, before we call it final.
Yeah, I will say the bike one is one that we struggled a little with, because we got a lot of comments about bike accommodations on various streets, but there's not always space to add a full bike line on every street. So, what we kind of ended up recommending is that the town separately do like a bike plan, right? That would kind of look in more detail about the streets that we could fit bike lanes, or places that we would need to, you know, remove on-street parking to be able to add bike lanes. So, there are some obvious solutions, right, in places where the bike way has, the bike path has connections, or are making connections to the train stations, but in other areas, it was kind of more of a, this is an area that we identified we really need to look a little bit more deeper into.
Yeah, no, and I understand that a lot of those are policy decisions, because many times we have residents come in and say that we should have less bike paths, right? Or that we should not convert, we should not add bike paths, so, but I'd like to see a draft of the plan to, to be able to give comments.
Beth, in terms of this study, there's no part of it that dealt with, you know, shared services like a shuttle or anything like that, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that's something you guys will comment on, so there'll be a report, right, that, that kind of comes with this plan, so I don't know if that's something you guys will comment on in the report.
Yeah, it was a comment that we heard a lot, and so, we talked about having a recommendation that gives the town some initial guidance on how you would scope a study. No routes or anything, that would be outside of our scope, but it'll certainly be documented here.
Yeah. We met in the fall with that electric.
Ride circuit.
Ride circuit, that was pretty promising, we should probably circle back with them.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
For the public meeting on the 15th, will that be, double go beyond kind of this presentation of what are the different projects that were looked at, what are the issues that were heard?
Are we advertising that meeting? I haven't seen it anywhere at this point.
I think that was on our agenda for early this week, is to get that Zoom link set out, yep.
And, so, we have the public meeting, and then, as Farina was pointing out, what's, is there a step in between before the final plan? Do you come back to us? Do you go to T-TAC, Capitol? What are, what's the, what are we thinking?
Yeah, I guess we hadn't really kind of planned, you know, we kind of wanted to roll out this initial kind of discussion with everybody before we kind of got to a, you know, final document, so I, we can talk more with Tool in terms of what, you know, they have time available in terms of rolling out, you know, additional public meet, or conversations with the board, or T-TAC, or whoever, yep.
I think it's important to maybe have an intermediary step in that process, so.
Sure, yep.
Anything else? I will thank you, thanks for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, next up is the Waterfield Lot, Civico, so Beth, I don't know if you wanna just take us through where we're at?
Sure.
As things are moving along nicely?
So, Civico submitted their permitting set to the board just before the holidays. We've been working with council to review some potential easement issues on the site. We just got some preliminary, preliminary information from council late last week, which we're gonna be reviewing with council for Civico as well over the coming weeks. And then, we expect to come back to the board on February 27th with a recommendation regarding the permitting set.
And I think there was a request to extend the due diligence period?
Correct.
And in turn, give us a little bit more time with that permitting set to vote on it, so, were they like to March 15th?
Right, so there, there's an amendment request to the land development agreement from Civico to, we had already extended the due diligence period till February 12th, and they are requesting an extension until March 15th.
And a lot of that has to do with their, their test borings at the site. They've, they've done that, but there's delays in the lab work coming back, so, just waiting for those results, but everything looks good so far. Anyone have an issue with extending that deadline?
Nope.
Hearing none, take a motion?
I move we extend the due diligence period for Civico from February 12th to March 15th.
And authorize the town manager to sign the amendment.
Authorize the town manager to sign the amendment on behalf.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right. Item six was the FY '24 budget slash capital plan slash ARPA, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we, we've given our staff some directives in terms of information we're looking for, specifically concerning ARPA and capital plan, and we hope to discuss, have that information available to discuss on February 27th. So, at our meeting on February 27th, we'll take that up, and Beth has begun, she needs to create her budget, and so that will maybe be made public on, or about February 15th.
Yep.
And then, we'll continue on in the process as we typically do. So, there's nothing to discuss at this point unless anyone has anything else, I kind of recapped it at the beginning. All right. Moving on, then we'll go to draft warrant articles. You saw a very early preliminary draft of our town meeting warrant, and the warrant closes March 10th, so we have essentially one more, well, actually, two, maybe two more meetings scheduled in between that time period. So, I just, like we did for Fall Town Meeting, just wanted to, early on, ask any board members if they had anything that they wanted to see or work towards in terms of articles for this Spring Town Meeting. The only two that I thought, well, there's the Lynch article that we had put on here, I think it's Article 16.
Correct.
Concerning funding engineering service for traffic improvements associated with Lynch School Project and its surrounding neighborhood. So, that's something we can certainly develop as we go forward. And the only two that I had, one was possibly if the town wanted to create an opioid stabilization fund. A lot of towns in the state are doing this now, because we're gonna keep getting this opioid money, rather than having it go just to the general fund, you can have it in opioid stabilization fund, that can be used to fund the necessary programming, and, and, why am I blanking on the word? The, what is, what is permitted through the settlement funds program, so just have that isolated. I don't know if that's something we wanted to do in this town, and then, the other thing is that we've started just discussing preliminarily, potentially a transfer from free cash to the capital stabilization fund, we'll have capital here on February 27th. I know they're gonna meet in between now and then to kind of go through a list and see what, you know, if we were to do this, what, what would it mean, and what that program might look like, so, so we can certainly put, you know, if the board's interested, two placeholders on for those two things. I didn't know if anyone had anything else, or if anyone thought that was a bad idea at this point. Anybody?
So, how long is the opioid money expected to come in for? Is it 10 years?
Nine years.
I think we got, Stacy, correct me, I think we got like the first, we got a chunk for the, the first five years or something in what we received.
But that's just with certain settlements, there are other ones happening, so, so there's certain defendants, non-bankrupt defendants, that there might be more money, more settlements coming in, and more money coming in, so, it's gonna be a steady.
The state creates a fund for communities to use, I think it was in the legislation to create a revolving fund, so we don't have to further appropriate the money?
Yeah, DOR's kicking that around.
Yeah.
But, right now, they're, there's instructing towns, if they wanted to, to do a stabilization fund, because the money's gonna keep flowing in at random times during the year, so.
Yeah, we'll get it once a year, with the settlement itself, whether or not other settlements are happening, and we just voted out of the general fund into an article fund. So, we're segregating it, we'll, we'll probably end up, we have to segregate what we've collected since town meeting into this article fund that we've already created. So, we can do that until we decide to do a stabilization fund, or hopefully, the state will come around and make life easy for everybody. Got it?
See.
It's not in their business, I guess.
Any thoughts on any of that?
Yeah, I like having the idea of, of the idea of having an opioid stabilization fund, so it's sort of segregated, doesn't get lost, and it gets used for some kind of public health purpose. That's what it's for.
And does that simplify how that, what we're doing now with the town meeting articles in terms of appropriating the funds?
So, you still have to appropriate it to, from the town fund?
I think you're gonna have a two-thirds vote if you're gonna have a stabilization fund to appropriate the money. We could design a fund to have a direct dedicated stream of revenue going in, but to come out, we would need to vote it.
Right, so right now, we only have to vote the money out of the general fund into the article funds?
Yep.
Now, we would have to vote the money in and money out?
I don't know, do we have to vote the money in if it's designed in the stabilization fund that the dedicated revenue source goes directly in that fund? I think we can do that.
But, but town meeting would have to vote the money out every year?
Yeah, but it's important that it would be a two-thirds vote.
Yes.
If it goes into a stabilization fund, to get it out, whereas it's majority vote of town meeting right now to appropriate. And I don't think, I mean, this, it still can only be used for specific purposes, so it's not like it can be used for anything else. In general, I'm not a huge fan of having a lot of different small funds, but, and it adds more accounting work, right?
And if it's fine, if it's only gonna be so many.
And it's only gonna be nine years, right? It's not gonna be something that will, we will have a permanent revenue fund for it beyond that, so I think it would, we still have to follow the rules of what it can be applied for, so I'm not sure what the advantages of the, of having a separate fund for it, and having to put it in and out, and.
Something to think about.
Yeah, we can think about it.
What is, Beth, do you remember what the sort of total expected amount from, obviously, the?
I knew that.
I sent it on it in the fall, so I knew at one point.
I wanna say, what did we get, like 79,000?
So far?
Yeah.
No, we got like 130 something, and we were able to appropriate 40 already, and I think in total, we might be getting maybe 500, I don't, I can't remember.
I don't remember off the top of my head, though. We got some money like right, I think it was like during town meeting, so it was too late to kind of add it to the, what we had appropriated last fall.
We can look into if there's any benefits to doing it.
Yeah. Again, if the state gets their act together, they would just create a revolving fund, and this issue can go away. When we just deposit the money, don't have to go to town meeting, separate it.
But, in terms of any other warrant articles anybody wants to be working on, as we head towards town, Spring Town Meeting?
I have none.
That's it. Quiet, quiet town meeting for this last board? All right. Well, if there's something, I'd ask you to get it, you know, talk to Beth and get it going, so that we have limited time in terms of meetings coming up, so we just need to get everyone in tune on that and move it forward, so.
I just wanted to mention, we expect to have Matt Abrahams here at a meeting, one of the meetings in March, to talk about the water and sewer rates, which is one of the articles.
He was just here, wasn't he just?
He was just here.
Was he just here? All right. All right, well, if there's nothing else on draft warrant articles, we'll move on to our last business agenda, which is the town manager contract. So, we, we circulated a draft contract to all the members, and I don't think anybody has any questions, concerns about that discussion? So, this would be a three-year contract to officially appoint Beth as town manager. It would run from February this year till February 26th, we'd put the exact dates in, and I'd ask if everyone's comfortable that they'd authorize myself as chair to execute a contract substantially in the same form as presented to all of you.
Let's do it.
All right.
Effective, starting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Awesome.
Every seven.
So, if there's a motion, we.
I move the chair execute the contract in substantially the same form with Beth Rudolph as the town manager.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Congratulations, Beth.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Working together.
We'll get that, we'll get that out tomorrow. Right early, we'll open the doors.
Do we need a motion on the other piece?
Oh, that's right, there's one other piece, in the contract under section, I think it's 1B, we need to authorize, or give permission to Beth to do any other kind of side business or anything like that. I understand, Beth, you have a hobby, you're a painter, and now it's out in the open, I'm sorry. And I understand you're pretty good at it, and, you know, there's been a couple of pieces of your artwork that have, you know, caught the eye of some online retailers over the, over the course of a few years, so, you know, it's a hobby that you typically do.
Very small hobby, but yes, it is.
So, if everyone's okay with Beth continuing that hobby, if she, you know, does the next Mona Lisa, she's allowed to sell it. Anyone have an issue with that? Hearing none, just wanna make that motion?
Yep, I move we approve Beth's outside painting, how would I prove that?
Outside painting business.
Yeah, painting business as a, as a activity allowed by the board in the contract.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, you're now the town manager, you can continue to paint. All right, the final item we have tonight is our consent agenda, which is always an exciting consent agenda, because it means the ANCA Fair is coming back, it means Town Day is coming back, so that's always great to see, so, any questions on the consent agenda? All right, so there's the consent agenda, and then there was a supplemental addition, I think, for one, one-day liquor license, so.
Just to clarify, that's dated for January 23rd, should that be February?
February 23rd, I believe.
Oh, yeah, it is February.
I move we approve the consent agenda for the, that's printed on the Monday, February 6th agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Do we need to approve the supplemental one?
I move we approve the supplemental consent agenda as printed for February 6th, for 2023, for the one-day liquor license with the date of February 23rd, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. I think that's everything. Anything else, Beth?
I think that's it.
All right, congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, WinCam, thanks, everyone.